All right, we're now recording. So I'm going to turn to the agenda. So welcome everyone to a special virtual EDC meeting on Wednesday, July 20th. We're starting at 6:06 and I'm calling the meeting to order. So the first thing we're going to do is have a roll call for the EDC. And the way I'm going to do this is I'm going to run down the list of EDC commissioners and members and just say if you're here or not. So you want to unmute for this portion and answer here. And if they're not here, then there won't be an answer. So first is myself, Dave Hammond. I'm here. Then Kevin Bowler.
Present.
Jim Lathrop. Suzanne Lane.
I'm here.
Rich Balastrocky. Okay, Rich is not here yet. Dan McFadden. No, Dan. Bill Hobbs. Not here yet. Virginia Abernathy.
Here.
Pete Robinson. Christine Halleck. Chris Donahue. And Colin Hagan.
Yes, I'm here.
Okay, so we have Dave Hammond, Kevin Bowler, Jim Lathrop, Suzanne Lane, Virginia Abernathy, and Colin Hagan present. That's six EDC members with Colin as an alternate. Our quorum is five, so we have a quorum and we can then, you know, vote on anything and take any actions. So the first order of business, well, the second order of business, the first one was the roll call. But now we're going to just approve the prior minutes from our June 17th meeting. And if you recall, sorry, there's this hummingbird that flies outside our window and it's just, it's kind of mesmerizing to watch it. If you recall the meeting on the 17th, we pretty much went through our 11 initiatives. And I gave a status update. So we had been in hiatus for a couple of months. Things have relatively stalled out. It's been difficult to advance our efforts and especially in a, in a public meeting, you know, setting or requirement. So we kind of updated where things stood. And that was the gist of that meeting. So are there any corrections or comments or edits for those minutes? Hearing none, I would ask for someone to make a motion that we accept the minutes and maybe pass to file.
Kevin Bowler will recommend a motion to accept the minutes as written.
Is there a second?
Oh, second, Suzanne Lane.
And is there any further discussion? All right, hearing none, the record will show that minutes have been approved. And we are going to move on to our next, kind of the feature presentation for tonight. So our EDC initiative number one has been number one for a reason because it is the item or the project that the EDC has been most excited about. And we've been working on this together for over one year now. And, you know, we've, as already, you know, updated and status to the EDC. And some of it was during the shutdown, some of the progress made during the shutdown. So a little bit harder maybe for everyone to keep up. And that's really the point of today's meeting as we want to bring everybody up to speed on the potential residential development on the Campbell Grain property, which has been forlorn and abandoned for, you know, about a decade and in kind of like not great shape before that. So this is a, the EDC has recognized this opportunity as a way to revitalize downtown Pawtucket, which is one of our main objectives as an EDC. Along with a number of other initiatives that we hope to bring to fruition, but we see a resident, we've seen a residential property as being a catalyst for change and revitalization of downtown by putting feet on the street and supporting businesses and services downtown. And, you know, infill development, walkable neighborhood, all that kind of good stuff. So as has been introduced, Wind Development has taken an interest in this project. I just, I just want to say that, you know, from the get go, and that for me was looking at their website. But then meeting with Tim Mustacato, who is their acquisitions expert and looking over the site and then every step of the way since then, we couldn't ask for a more above board investor developer to get interested in our community. So it's very, very exciting to welcome Wind Development to our EDC meeting and have them present this project to the EDC members. So with that, I'm going to turn, so what I have to do now is actually pass the baton here to Matt Rubina. And Matt is going to share a presentation. So that's happening as a, there we go, Matt. You should be able to share your presentation now.
All right, let's see if this works. Oh, perfect. All right. Does everyone have the presentation on their screen?
I just see you, Matt.
Not yet.
All right.
You're sharing terms.
All right, let me, let me try something.
Oh, there you go.
All right. So now you all can see the PowerPoint screen. Perfect. All right. Well, I'll start with brief introductions. So my name is Matt Rubina. I'm a project director at Wind Development. And on the, on this meeting with me, we've got Adam Stein, who's the Senior Vice President for Development at Wind Development, Tim Mustacato, who is our Head of Acquisitions, and Bill Sweeney, who is our local counsel, who's been working very closely with us and Dave as we go through, or as we commence the zoning process and start with a local public process. At this point, we have been working with Dave for a few months now to try to shape this project and put something together that we think is a really excellent project for the Campbell Grain site. We've had several conversations with local business owners in the area. We had an event coordinated by the local, by the Ocean Chamber of Commerce a few weeks ago and got some good feedback at that presentation. And I've spoken to some of you one-on-one. So some of you are probably familiar with this project. You're already, or probably heard a little bit about it. So this presentation, I'll give you a little bit of background about Wind Companies and who we are, some of the work that we've done elsewhere in the area. And I'll give some specifics about what we're proposing for the site. But this is a totally interactive presentation, so feel free to interrupt me at any time. Tim, Adam, or Bill may chime in at points too. So without further ado, I'll go ahead and get started on the presentation. So the site we're talking about, as you all know, is the 15 Cogswell, 27 West Broad Street, the former Campbell Grain site. So Wind Development is part of a larger umbrella group of wind companies. And we're a private, family-owned business. We've been in business for just under 50 years now. And we're the, we're one of the largest developers and managers of rental affordable and mixed income housing in the country, as well as the larger, the largest manager of privatized military housing in the country. Where we have a development team that spans New England and the mid-Atlantic. So our headquarters is in Boston. We've got development offices in New York and DC. And we've got a really strong presence in Connecticut. So in Connecticut, we've got 14 properties, about 2,300 units. And that's all over the state. So Hartford, Bridgeport, East Haven, Norwich. We're all over the place, including a regional management office in Hartford and another regional management office in North Kingstown, Rhode Island, which is actually a little bit closer to Pawtucket. So what we do on the Wind Development side is we build and own affordable and mixed income rental projects. We have extensive experience working with mixed income projects, a lot of age-restricted projects. And we've got a lot of experience working with CHFA and DOH. So that's the Connecticut Housing Finance Authority and the Connecticut Department of Housing, which are the two main funding sources for the types of project that we develop. We've got a pretty long history working with those folks and have been very successful in getting the necessary financing to build the kind of project that we're proposing here in Pawtucket.
Matt, the only thing I want to add to that, I think you hit on it in the first slide a little bit, is sort of the long-term ownership. You know, game plan for when stakeholder position where we're not merchant developers, we have a development arm, which is what Matt and Tim and I work for, and a separate management arm. And the Wind model, which has been the Wind model for almost 50 years, has been to create properties, you know, get them financed, get them built and stabilized, and then manage them for the long term. So we're not in the business of building buildings and selling them quickly to a REIT or another financial institution. We're really in the business of owning these properties for a long period of time and really being part of the community long term. And I think we'll go through some other projects that we've done in other municipalities in Connecticut and elsewhere where you could go today and see a property when developed two years ago or 20 years ago. And that'll give you a pretty good feel on what type of developer, manager, and owner when it is. So just, just a, just a piece, I think, worth mentioning, Matt.
Yeah, to Adam's point, what are the, another one of the projects we've got actively going on right now is the rehabilitation of a property in Waterbury that we've owned since we initially converted it to apartments in the early 80s. And this is essentially the third round of capital renovations that we're doing in the building since we've owned it. And it's 40 years. So we make sure that we're not just in it in the long haul, but we're also taking care of the property, making sure it's a quality place for the people who live there. And making sure it's really the best property on the street when you're driving by it. Another big part of our Wind Development model is building grain into everything we do. And we've really been pushing the envelope on sustainable measures over the past few years. Within our development team, we have a green team that reviews every project, is with us every step of the way as we're making decisions about how we build projects, how we renovate projects, to make sure that we're really exceeding our sustainability goals. This project that we're proposing here is being designed to passive house standards, which is effectively the most stringent energy, sustainable building model that there is out there right now. Another project that we have in East Haven, Connecticut, where we're completing now, we're wrapping up construction in a month or two, is going to be the first passive house historic project in the state and one of the first passive house historic projects in the country. That's really a credit to our green team who's really been pushing a way to merge the green standards that we have into where typically more challenging projects with historic projects where there's a certain standards you have to meet with the Secretary of the Interior's Office and the National Park Service. So a little bit about some of the work that we've done that's informing what we're proposing here in Pawtucket. So the first project is the one that I just mentioned in East Haven, the Tyler, where the town of East Haven a few years ago put out an RFP to redevelop their old high school, which had been sitting vacant for about 20 years. They, the town couldn't figure out what they wanted to do with the building. So they put it out to bid, you know, we responded and proposed 70 new apartments for seniors aged 55 plus. And it was very well received by the community. This is a mixed income project and the mix of incomes that we have at the Tyler is very similar to what we're proposing here in Pawtucket, where you're serving a diverse and inclusive group within the community. As I mentioned, this is the first project in the state that is a historic passive house project. So merging two of the things we do really well, which is historic renovation, as well as sustainable development. And it will be done with the project in mid-September. Tremendous demand for this building. We're still, what, a little, a little less than two months away from completion. And we've got the project about half leased at this point. So we see really high demand for the, for the projects we build based on the quality. And, you know, the need that there is for rental housing, maybe hasn't been, hasn't materialized because there isn't a lot of rental development in the area. Another project that we recently completed is the Watson, and it's up here in Quincy, Massachusetts. 140 units in Quincy, which is the town over from Boston. This is the first project in Massachusetts that utilized Mass Housing's Workforce Housing Initiative. And Mass Housing is the Massachusetts equivalent of CHAF. And very similar in terms of the income tiering at the Watson, where we have some 50 or moderate income units, 110, which is more workforce income units, and unrestricted market rate units. But each of the units within the building are indistinguishable in terms of finishes, location within the building. And that's something that we would be doing here where even though this is a mixed income project, you walk into any unit and it would essentially look the same as any other unit within the building. Brighton Marine, another recently completed project up here in Boston in the Brighton neighborhood. And here we partnered with the Brighton Marine Veterans Campus, or a nonprofit organization that provides healthcare and other services to veterans. We built this 102-unit building on their campus in Brighton, across the street from the MBTA Green Line. Similar mixed income structure, various income tiers, including some very low-income units, some workforce housing, and some unrestricted market units. And we've had tremendous success leasing this project up. I believe the project was completed in the spring and it's been very well received. Similar concept in that all of the units, similar, the same finishes and are equally distributed throughout the building. So with that, I'll go into the details of what we're proposing for the Campbell Grain site. So just to give a little bit of context, the building we're proposing, you've got the Pawtucket River right down here with West Hurley down here. This is Cogswell Street. So this is the Olive Oil Shop. This is the Vaca's woodworking shop. And you've got Best Eaten down here just off the map. And then the Amtrak line is running right behind the site. What we're proposing is 82 units of rental housing. It would be a four-story wood frame building over one story of a concrete podium garage. There would be, all of the parking for the residents would be onsite between the garage, as well as some surface parking that we're proposing. The space along the river at the lower level would be open to public access. It will envision an extension of the riverwalk that I know you all have been working on and that Dave has been advocating for, but then some private amenity space with a change of grade onsite as you get closer to the railroad tracks. And the project would be funded by CHAF and DOH funding, which I spoke about earlier. And I'll get into the timeline in a, in a little bit. Just to give you a different perspective. So this is the site plan that we're proposing. The unit mix that we'd be proposing for the 82 units is a mix of studios, one bedrooms, two bedrooms, and a small amount of three-bedroom units. As you can see, it's mostly one and two-bedroom units. And then we've got 92 parking spaces currently in the site plan. So that exceeds the one-to-one parking minimum that's required in the PD zone where we're located. As I said, this is a four-story building over a concrete podium, which would have a parking garage in it. We would have the open space along the river, as well as some upper-level resident amenity space outdoors, as well as some indoor amenity space, which would include things like a community room and a fitness room. It is a colorized version of what you just saw, which is maybe a little bit easier to read. So this is Cogswell Street down here. The Pawtucket River here, the railroad tracks up here. For reference, this is the Best Eaten here. This is Jim's building here and the Vaca's over here. About 40, 44 service spaces, 48 garage spaces and a leasing office at the garage level. Then as you go up in the building, you have residential units on the second through fifth floor. On the second floor, you have some amenity space which opens out to the upper-level outdoor amenity space. And then apartments above. So this is what the building would look like from the West Hurley side of the river. This is about where, probably about like malted barley is, from the perspective, assuming the trees weren't in the way. And then this is the view from about the railroad, but a little bit higher up. So as you're crossing into Connecticut from the West Hurley Station, this is the view you'd see of the building. And this is what it looks like from in front of Boggs Alley. So the building, even though it's a four-story building over podium, because it's set so far back from West Broad Street, it's pretty well hidden by the existing buildings there. And then what's not covered by buildings is covered by existing landscaping. So you really can't see the building given its mask from the main street. You really have to come onto the site to see the building, or you would see it as you're passing through Pawtucket on the train. So in terms of our timeline, right now, we're going through the planning and zoning process. And we're starting that by having conversations like this one where we're speaking to local business owners, our neighbors. We've got a large public meeting scheduled for next Wednesday, which is open to anyone in Stonington. And then we'll be going through the formal zoning process shortly after that with a goal of making an application to CHAF and DOH for their funding resources in November. If the project is successfully awarded resources, we'd be able to start construction towards the end of 2021. And then complete construction in early 2023 and have people moving in pretty quickly after that. And some other recently completed projects, we've had people fully occupy the building within two to three months. It could happen as rapidly here in Pawtucket. I think there is, there is a lot of demand here. We, it could be as long as six or seven months, but by the end of 2023, we'd have a full building with residents who are eating, shopping, living in Pawtucket, using the Amtrak to get to work. They're part of the community. In terms of who we've, who we're building this for, and we've talked a lot about this being a mixed income project. So the project we're proposing is a mix of unrestricted market units, which anyone can rent as long as they've got sufficient income to pay the rent, and some income restricted units. And what the income restricted units mean is you have to, you have to have an income, you have to demonstrate an ability to pay rent. But the rent level is set so people at different income tiers only have to pay 30% of their income and still be able to afford the rent level that we're charging. So just for, for an example, for an 80% AMI unit, and the AMI stands for Area Median Income. For a 3% household, that means that their income is at or below about $74,000. And so the rent they would pay is approximately 30% of their monthly income for about $1,600 a month in rent. And the same goes on for the 50% AMI and 30% AMI units. 30% of the building would be unrestricted market rate units. So this is anyone who can afford the rent that we're charging. This can be professionals, high-income earners, two-income households. There, there is no restriction as to who can live in these units, so long as they can pay the rent. Then from there, we do get into some of the, we get into the income restriction. So an 80% AMI unit is not very different from a market rate renter. The income limit here is, as I said, just under $74,000. This could be a mid-level professional, two-income households that are maybe earning a little bit less than a market rate renter. And then we get into the 50% AMI households, which were about 40% of the building. For reference, that's about $46,000 for a three-person household. And for Southeast Connecticut, that's a starting salary for a teacher, for a municipal employee, a policeman, a restaurant worker. And then a portion of the units would be set aside at 30% AMI, which is a little bit more affordable for a three-person household. The income limit's about $27,000. And this could be an administrative worker, someone with a part-time job, retiree on a fixed income. And what we're trying to do here is really create an inclusive community that anyone could afford to live in one of the apartments that we're building here. All that said, Wind is a, we're a profit, a for-profit company. We do expect to make some money on this project. And so we build the building and we design it in a way to really maximize the market rents that we're able to achieve here. And as Adam alluded to earlier, we're a long-term owner of projects. So we, we have onsite property management staff that are responsible for the day-to-day operations of the property, make sure the building is in good repair, making sure we're taking care of any preventative maintenance issues before they happen, taking care of snow removal, landscaping, gardening, paying general upkeep of the property to make sure that it continues to look good and achieve really high rents. The other piece of this is that even with the income restrictions, because we're a rent-based housing provider, the people moving in have to show some ability to pay rent. They can't pay the rent, they can't move in. So there has to be some form of income or other means of paying rent in order to live in the building. Additionally, we screen all residents for credit and for background checks to make sure that we have people moving in who are going to be positive additions to the community. And I just want to caveat, this is the current breakdown. It's been updated since the initial presentation we gave to the town. And this is likely what our final breakdown is going to be. It's been updated since the the initial presentation we gave to the town, and this is likely what our final breakdown is gonna be. Uh, but this is, this is still subject to to CHAFPA and DOH approval. Um, but this is what we're we're applying on and what we think we're pretty sure is is actually gonna be in place uh, when we yeah, when we get this project underway. Yeah, you know, I I've only got one, one more slide too. Um, yeah, and we can, we can come back and then happy to spend some more time talking through this and our and our operating model with everyone. Um, but just, just so one final thought, so i- in terms of the the construction period economic impact, um, so the the total cost of the project is about thirty million dollars. That creates a a little over two-hundred jobs just during the construction period, about a hundred of which are direct construction jobs and a hundred and sixteen of which are indirect jobs supported by the construction effort. In terms of, excuse me, indirect economic impact to to the community, it's about seventeen million dollars. And that's uh, you know, wages spent within the community, um, people coming to work on the site and then either staying or eating or patronizing businesses in the local area. Uh, we we focus pretty heavily on local hiring, and we have a a consultant that we bring on board who helps our contractors uh, really focus on you finding subcontractors that are local to the area and high-quality subcontractors. So there there's additional dividends paid from uh, the the local, local folks being hired and then spending their money back in uh, back in the Stonington area. So that's the end of the the formal piece of the presentation. Happy to open it up to questions and we could talk about uh, anything that we did cover or that we didn't cover. Um, just let me know. So Dave, I don't know how you wanna, i- if you wanna go one by one by for through folks, or if uh, people just wanna start asking questions and happy to answer them.
So let's do an open mic to start, and then when uh, when that peters out, I'm gonna go and go around and just ask if, I'll call people by name and ask if they have anything further to say. So first off, we'll just do an open mic, survival of the fittest.
Well, I would uh, I'd vote for me to speak first because my one-year-old is currently quiet. Um, so let me ask quickly before he starts being loud. Um, so a couple of quick questions, I I I'm curious about, um, you know, you guys have mixed-income expertise. I'm curious about, you know, what have been your strategies, you know, approaches to foster community engagement and get support for mixed-income housing? Because I think, you know, obviously sometimes that can be sort of a a bad word for people. So curious about your experiences in that, maybe sometimes where it's been challenging for you and what you've been able to do to get the right level of community support behind the project.
You want me to start, Matt and Tim?
Yeah, go ahead.
So that's a good, great question, and I think all of these properties and all of these projects require community support. And I don't think we would do a development in a community or municipality that didn't support the project, because these are, these projects are tough. What we really like about Pocatuck and additionally the fact that it's a a great community, it's right off the corner of Broad Street, it's close to the Amtrak and commuter rail access and all the the nice things, the whole community that you wanna live in, has been the the support we received from Dave and others uh, within Pocatuck so far. And it's very important that we have that. These applications we make to CHFA and DOH that Matt mentioned are super competitive. And only the projects that have community support will get the required funding. And it's really an education process, so how do you do it? So the second to last slide that Matt put up, I think is very telling. And I think it's an educational process where you're saying you have market-rate housing, you have middle-income housing, you have um, affordable housing, which is not necessarily a good word, I think Dave had a better name for that uh, uh, that we could use, but I think it's describing the incomes, describing the fact that the residents that live here have to have an income. And the benefit of the program is such that you're building a building at market-rate costs. The the resources you're receiving from the state agencies allow us to deliver rents at a lower uh, tier that make them certain incomes. And those people are paying their rent based on thirty percent of their income. And it's, it's all the same unit, it's all the same fit and finish. There's no differentiation between the market, middle, or low. And that's the product and that's the the building that we're, you know, we're trying to develop here. So it's um, I I think this outreach is super important. In in East Haven, the building was vacant for twenty years. Mayor had been trying to redevelop that literally for that period of time. It took Wynn and probably three years, a lot of gray hair of our lives, to work with the town, let them understand what the building was gonna be, and not just the building, but who was gonna be living in that building. And then when the people realized, oh, it's my mother or my mother-in-law, or I get to sell my home and live there on fixed in, on a fixed income later in life and stay in that town, stay in that community where I grew up, or stay in that building where I went to school, you know, thirty, forty years ago, that's what allowed us to be selected as the development partner in East Haven and develop a really great building that we'll probably look to do a second phase two or three years down the road. So it's um, it's a, it's a, it's a process, it's an educational process, we need community support um, to do these applications and feel good about them. So I don't know, Matt, Tim, if you guys.
Yeah, and you know, what I'll add to that is, you know, like Adam said, it really is, it's an education process. But what a lot of people don't realize, um, when these kinds of projects are proposed, is that these are the people who live in here are people who already live in Pocatuck. It's it's not, you know, people that are coming in from other communities. It's mostly people who live next door or down the street. And and what we've seen with with East Haven and another project that we recently completed in in Attleboro, Mass, which is, you know, maybe a little bit bigger than than Stonington, but not much larger. Um, most of the people applying to live in our buildings are people who grew up and live in that community. And so, you know, it's, there's an existing need, and we view ourselves as as filling that existing need um, in in meeting, you know, meeting people in the communities that they already live. Um, and a lot of people don't, don't think about it, and that's why we like to to throw that chart up there to show, you know, it is a broad range of people that this building applies to, the the building can appeal to. Um, and so we wanna make sure that people understand it is, you know, there are a lot of different people who would wanna live here and could live here, uh, and we wanna make that as broad as possible.
So if uh, if I can add to what Adam and Matt said, I know the EDC has heard me say before about how important it is for us to change the narrative uh, the perception or assumption people might make about what quote-unquote of affordable housing means. So one of the things we've been working as far as that narrative goes is, you know, using the terminology like mixed income or inclusive housing. So everybody should have a a great place to live. We have forty percent of our renters in Connecticut that are cost burdened by housing. And that's done by a a study um, by the Southeastern Connecticut Housing Authority. Forty percent, that means they're paying more than thirty percent of their income just to, just to, you know, find housing. So that's what this type of project helps to address. If I look at that demographic, that, to me, that's the most powerful slide. I mean, I love everything about the buildings and everything and when the company, you know, I love that stuff. But that, the most powerful slide is the second to last one you guys saw that shows the demographic. I challenge anyone to look at that slide and say, I don't know somebody that's in one of those income levels. Because I know somebody in every single one of those. I want those people who are my friends we're dealing with here, and you know, I'm I'm just so thrilled that we attract um, a company of the caliber of Wynn to have this type, this level of interest in our community and help to provide that.
Yeah, I feel like the word inclusive, especially now, feels like a good word to use.
Yep.
Agree. Anybody else? So open mics, so have have that.
If I, so if I could just add, this is uh, Bill Sweeney. You know, I think when you look at that graph, it's important to look at the numbers too. I mean, a fully thirty percent of the units, or almost twenty-five units in the project, are gonna be completely market-rate. And I, and I think that's one of the real special things that Wynn brings to the table are these mixed-income projects. Twenty years ago, you had a project that was all at one income level. They were sort of homogenous, but they're really creating neighborhood within their own building. So you've got market-rate units, then you've got another fifteen percent that are capped at seventy-three thousand nine twenty. So fully forty-five percent of the of the units in the building could be occupied by people making over seventy-four thousand dollars a year. That's a big amount of money, I think, in in the big picture. And it, I think it shows the nature of the profile of the people that are gonna be attracted here. You take that other category too, the the forty-six thousand, literally eighty-five percent of the units, uh, all but about twelve units in the project. Seventy of the units are gonna be occupied by households making, you know, up to forty-six thousand dollars a year or more. So, you know, there is a lot of truth in the numbers, and the numbers are important. And I think, you know, it it's important that we dispel a lot of the myths, um, a lot of the prejudice that people have against, um, you know, mixed income and fixed income projects. Uh, Wynn's presenting something that's really attractive, and quite frankly, um, you know, I know how hard uh, Dave and this group has worked to try to get the Campbell uh, grain mill redeveloped. Um, it is a difficult site, it's less than two acres in size, it has limited frontage. It's been a, it's, it's an eyesore, it's a blighted, underutilized property. And this is a, you know, really, in my opinion, the best chance to bring that property into and and attract community investment uh, into the, into Pocatuck. So uh, those are just my comments on it, but I think, you know, in terms of, you know, tonight, you know, you know, we, and and our public outreach, to the extent the EDC can help us sort of tell that narrative and explain to people why this is so important and how, what a good project this really is for the neighborhood and for all the businesses that the people living there will become customers of. Uh, I think that's a role of the EDC that could really help us in the days ahead.
Yep, thanks, Bill. Um, any other EDC members or anybody on the call with, wanna jump in?
So this is Kevin Badler here, um, so I've got a number of different questions. But but first of all, there's someone who, there's a lot of background noise coming in from somewhere, if everyone, whoever that might be, can maybe mute their phones. Um, so so uh, you mentioned the green team, which sounds really good. Are we likely to see something like solar panels on the roof of this building?
Yes, that's, that's something we're looking at right now. Um, we, we're gonna, we're we're still working through the the exact mechanical system, trying to find some roof space to be able to include some solar, solar panels. Uh, it probably wouldn't be a very large array, just given the the amount of usable space you have, but it is something that we would try to do.
Thank you. Um, the renderings are great, thank you very much. I think that adds, that that adds a lot to this presentation. But I'm actually surprised that the building looks as small as it's gonna look. Do you have to do a lot of earthwork to take the earth down next to the railway line in order to get that, or are you planning to leave a lot of the um, the grade that's currently there on the property in place?
Yeah, so and 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 Bill, Bill alluded to this, this is a a really difficult site. So on top of the actual size, um, is you probably know, there is a lot of very interesting topography on the site with the ramps going up from the lower level up to the the railroad tracks. Um, i- if you're familiar with the site, we're essentially leaving that retaining wall closest to the railroad tracks, uh, we're gonna be rebuilding that wall, but that wall is essentially staying in place and being extended, so let me just pull up the site plan. Um, that wall is approximately here, and we're basically extending it this way closer to the river. So we would be exporting uh, quite a bit of soil in order to create the garage level down here, though we are gonna be able to reuse some of it to elevate the garage level a little bit higher than what the grade is currently, and then to to grade this section right here, which would slope from this upper-level amenity area at the the former Amtrak abutment down to the parking area.
Great. Um, if this was a market-rate residential development, what variances would you need to be requesting from planning and zoning in order to get the this building approved?
I'd be happy to answer that, Matt, if that's okay.
Yeah, go ahead.
Yeah, so, so like I said, there's um, it's a very tight case, and and there are a number of of setback variances for both the building and the parking lot that would be required, and there's probably a half a dozen of them. Um, but really, the three major zoning compliance issues are uh, the height of the building. Um, we expect the building, we don't have a final architectural plan, we're still working with conceptuals, but we will be over fifty feet. Um, so that's an issue. Um, the building is is solely residential, there's no mixed-use component. Um, and so that's also a compliance issue um, under the current zoning code. Finally, the density um, for um, a straight residential use or multifamily use, uh, in this case. Um, we're over the typical density requirements. Um, we're gonna be using, availing ourselves of the state statutes um, uh, to be able to get some flexibility in the zoning regulations to allow that. So it's really those three major issues, again, density, the hi- height of the building, and the sole residential, multifamily residential use of the property. And then there's a variety, I would say about a half a dozen setbacks that would typically require variances or some other type of relief.
And what about parking?
Actually, we actually comply with the parking. Um, in the PB five zone, um, you're required to have one uh, parking space per residential dwelling unit. So we have eighty-two spaces, I think we have, um, don't correct me if I'm wrong, uh, Matt, but I think it's something like ninety-four or ninety-six.
Ninety-two.
Between the, uh, ninety-two. I think there's actually gonna be a couple more than that based on the latest drawings I saw today, but um, we 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 are more than one-to-one, and that's the requirement. So in fact, there's, we're actually completely compliant from a parking standpoint.
Great. Um, can we talk a little bit more about you financing? You mentioned that it was very competitive to get the financing from the uh, government departments. Uh, so a couple of questions, one is, what's the percentage chance, or how how often do you fail in 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 getting that uh, that approval? Um, and is there a correlation between the mixed-income ratios and the financing? Uh, and the third part of that question is, is there an equity stake that Wynn needs to put into this development alongside the financing?
Yeah, so uh, a few different questions, there's a uh, ask again in case I missed part of that. So the part of the reason that when when Dave um, and and Jason Vincent before him were part of the reason Wynn was so interested in this site, um, when they approached us was because of its location, because Pocatuck scores very well in terms of the state's funding priorities. So the the project itself has been structured in a way to be very competitive and score very well with the state funding programs that we talked about. In terms of a given application round, there's only resources enough to go around to maybe between half and a third of the projects. But this project, the way that it's been designed and where it's located, gives it a much higher likelihood of being successful because of its close proximity to trap, uh, to transit, because of the walkability of the neighborhood, because of the the quality of uh, of Pocatuck as a community. The the income tiering does play into that as well. So the income tiers that we're proposing are are meant to maximize the scoring that we would get uh, under the CHAFPA funding program. So um, i- i- there is an interplay there, but this project, as we've designed it, is is pretty competitive. Of course, it all depends on what are the other projects that apply. If there is, if for whatever reason we don't get funded uh, in this application round, we would reapply on the next round and and fix any deficiencies that the the state found with the application. Um, what that does is it just adds to to the timing. Um, but this is the kind of project that could go in and get funded on the first round of But this is the kind of project that could go in and get funded on the first round of, of applications.
Matt, that one, the one caveat is there, the funding rounds are once a year at this point. So we, we're still waiting for the, we think it'll be sometime in November. But this particular program is the nine percent tax credit program. It's once a year. If you don't get funded, you literally have to wait another full year to make that application. So the caveat here, guys, is that we have a seller that is going to allow us to extend our site control to go for another ride. So as, as Matt suggested, we would do another year. I don't, I don't want that that come across as that's a given because a seller may say, hey, guys, I've been with you long enough. I want to do something else with the property. So we all need to make best efforts if we're going to, if we're going to submit an application and work on these type of deals to get it funded and get as much support as we can in the initial funding round.
I would add to that as well and say, you know, Wynn's track record of success in securing these competitive financing applications awards is, is great. We've done that for years and years in, in many states, including Connecticut. But what, what makes our application better, guys? What makes it stand out from the rest of them? And, and a huge part of that, frankly, the biggest part of that is the support locally, the support from the town, the support from organizations such as the EDC. And that, the, the outpouring support which we've received thus far and, you know, hope to continue to receive is really what makes your application more competitive and sets it apart from the rest of the pool.
Great. And is there an equity stake that Wynn needs to contribute in order to get the financing in as well?
So I was, I was texting Matt. I think there is a percentage of fee we have to defer in the application. Is that right, Matt? I don't know if it's twenty-five percent or greater.
Yeah, that's right. There is, there is a portion of our fee. I think it's twenty percent in Connecticut.
Right, so we would, we provide all the development needs as we pursue a deal. So anything that we spend on architectural, engineering, you know, going through the entitlement process, putting forth an applications, appraisals, market studies, environmental, and then as part of the requirements with CHFA, they require us to defer, you know, basically you make an equity contribution of a portion of our developer fee. So that's our equity component of the deal.
Okay, great. One last question. For the mixed income units, do you, do they get split evenly across the studio, the one bedroom, the two bedroom and the three bedrooms?
Yes, they do. So there would be a, a portion of each of those bed, units types allocated to the different income levels and split, spread across the, the building evenly.
Right, and spread across the building evenly, right, Matt? So by floor, by view, so you don't put all the thirty percent along the train track. You spread them all out so there's an equal distribution.
Thank you. I think it's a tremendous opportunity. Thank you very much for your time.
No, great.
Uh, great questions, Kevin. I'm going to leave the mic open for another minute or we can have a round.
Yeah, this is Colin again. Just one more quick question. Are you, are you guys in the process of trying to kind of generate community engagement around a similar project during COVID? Because I can see, you know, challenges of getting the right level of community engagement. And on the other hand, I can see everybody sitting in the town Facebook community forum with nothing else to do, you know, just firing off messages here and there too. So I'm curious if you have any kind of community engagement experience, you know, in the last few months.
Adam, what do you?
Yeah, I, I'm happy to go start. I was thinking, I was thinking what you're doing in New Jersey. And then I was thinking, Colin, what we're doing on the project. We have, we currently have seven active construction projects in various parts of the New England, upstate New York. And we're working on a, a pipeline of deals. Tonight, before this meeting, we had a project in Springfield, which is an old hotel across from the MGM Casino that we're looking to convert into housing. And we had a city council meeting tonight at five o'clock. So, and two weeks before that, we had a planning board meeting. We have another project in the North Shore of the Boston area that we're about to start a rezoning effort on. In New Jersey, we have two projects. We're making very similar applications on new construction type of developments, one for veterans housing, one for seniors housing. So is COVID an issue? Yes, does it slow us down a little bit? But I think the strength of Wynn from a financial capacity, from an investor relationship, the fact that we've been able to do this and have strong partners, we'll be able to kind of push these deals forward. What we're seeing is a flight to quality and a flight to strong developers that have the means and, and relationships to do these type of projects. So I'm not saying it's going to be easy or it's going to be quick or as quick as it normally would have been. If quick's a good word, because nothing in development is quick. But it's, it's a challenge we're up for and we're, we're dealing with it at many levels, so.
Yeah, and, and just to add to that, for, you know, what we've done so far is, given COVID, we've been trying to do more one-on-one or two-on-one conversations just to limit the size of, of groups. And we did have that one presentation to the chamber members, which had maybe twenty people at it, but everyone was able to keep their distance and it was outdoors. So that helped. So we're still trying to engage people, given the circumstances. I think it seems like people are still willing to participate as long as, you know, social distancing protocols are put in place and, and people can, can keep their distance. You know, I, I've seen, I, I think this project has actually had some, some pretty robust participation, given everything that's going on with COVID. And I think, you know, Dave has, has really helped us think through how we, we do the community engagement in a really thoughtful way, which is, you know, why next week we're doing an online presentation, but in-person, open house. If people want to stop by and ask us questions in, in person. So, you know, we're, we're trying to, we're trying to keep the engagement process going. And I, I think it's been working well so far.
I agree, yeah.
Can, can you tell us more about the building itself, the materials that you're going to be using? Do you have some more information about that?
Yeah, I could speak generally about it. So in, in terms of the, the building materials for, for the structure itself, so we would have a concrete podium with four stories of wood frame. In terms of the cladding material, we'd be looking at a combination of a cementitious panel and cementitious siding to, to break up the massing a little bit. And then we're looking to, to do this graded color scheme to give it some, some visual interest. In terms of interior finishes, we typically use a vinyl wood plank look, which is pretty typical amongst a pretty big range of rental products. It's been pretty popular. Efficient, efficient water fixtures, efficient light fixtures, Energy Star appliances. Just to give a broad overview, is there, is there any, I guess, specific questions you have about the, the design or the materials being used?
Uh, well, I wanted to know about the energy efficiencies being used in the units.
Yeah, and so I, I don't have all the, the numbers in front of me, but the passive house design basically dictates that we, we have to model this building. So the, the fixtures, both the water fixtures and the light fixtures, have to, to fit within this energy model, which really pushes us to very efficient numbers. The windows, for example, I don't, I don't have the, the U value in front of us, but in, in front of me, but I think it's probably like, you know, point three or a point two eight U value window that we would be looking at here. At least R forty ceiling insulation, at least R twenty-one wall insulation. So there, there are some prescriptive metrics that we would have to follow. But the, the energy modeling that we go through with the passive house project pushes us to even more efficient standards and just a, you know, an Energy Star prescriptive model we would have to follow would otherwise make us do.
Do you have a, is there an existing project that would have like comparable features that you're explaining there?
Yeah, so the, I mean, the one in, the one in East Haven is probably the most comparable because it's also a passive house design.
Yeah, Matt, I was thinking that or the project we're doing alone, which is new construction. The problem is it's under construction. So I mean, Susan, if you wanted us to get you more of a highlight sheet of what those energy efficiency criteria are relative to the type of heating or the insulation or the window values or what the, you know, solar requirements or, or components are, happy to do that. So happy to get you more detail if that's helpful.
Yeah, that would be interesting.
Yeah, you know, it's funny because these, the, the funding agencies get more and more stringent every year with the green standard. So even something that we did, you know, five years ago, we probably wouldn't do that same building design now just because the, the guidelines have gotten more stringent, the performance metrics have gotten more stringent and the technology has gotten better. So we're, we're able to build more efficiently, but definitely happy to, to get a, a standard template spec sheet that we can share.
Okay, sounds good, yeah.
All right, I'm going to call for a round so we can move along. And I think first I'll go to Jim Lathrop.
Yeah, just a great project, guys. Just had a, a few, a few, a couple of thoughts and a couple of questions. First of all, from an economic perspective, I think with the basic employment being robust in the area with electoral vote and with housing inventory being relatively low, I do not, this is going to have great effect on the overall rental market in terms of having a dilutive effect, far from it. I think this, this area is crying out for, for capacity. So kudos to Wynn for recognizing this. We've, we as an EDC have been trying to communicate this to a, a number of people over the last couple of years. So, uh, quick question, is the total projected additional headcount to downtown based on the, the unit breakdown? Would it be around a hundred and fifty head range?
You know, I, I think, when I did the calculation a few weeks ago, I was thinking it was closer to a hundred and twenty, a hundred and thirty, but it could be as, as high as a hundred and fifty.
Okay. I, I, some of the, Suzanne asked, or you answered some of the questions about passive building design features. It doesn't seem like that's really heavy lifting in the design. A lot of the things you mentioned are, are now code for, for, you know, all designs. So it doesn't seem
Right.
god awful to do. My, my, another question is mitigation of rail noise through window, window engineering. Are you planning on any?
Yeah, so well, we've, we've got an acoustical engineer engaged who'll, who'll give some feedback on the acoustic rating of the, the wall assembly facing the rail line. So yeah, that, that's something that we would build into the design to make sure we're, you know, we're providing somewhere that's comfortable. That said, I mean, people, people are going to move into the building understanding there's an active Amtrak line right behind them. And that's, you know, some people, it's part of the appeal. I, you know, I, I personally live in a building that's on the, on a subway line and I, I can barely hear the train from my windows because the, the products we use to, to build buildings are, have gotten better. But for some people, it's kind of nice to hear the train passing by as long as it's not the, as long as the horn isn't blaring.
Yeah, that's just something that I've run across and I also have a project going on near the tracks and I have to consider that. So a little bit smaller. So, so the last, the last question, can you put up the slide again with a view across the Bess Eden? That shows the height where the buildings are massed behind it?
That's one of
Exactly. So we, we, prior to you guys being involved, we did a little bit of this with a local architect to do some conceptual. I think you actually kind of looked at them. I, which, which, wait, at fifty foot of building height, I, I, I think you need to look at that because I'm very, very, very familiar with that corner. That seems a little low in that picture for a fifty feet. Unless, again, unless you were going to start at a very low base elevation, I mean, you can't there because you'll draw water. So I think your base elevation is max about what, ten feet there? Maybe twelve PFE? So, so I just see that picture looks a little, I'm not saying it's, it's, it's offensive in any way, but what I, what I'm saying is that, when we modeled it, that almost exact view, because we did the same thing with 3D modeling, the building appeared to be much higher than that in terms of horizon visibility. Just some feedback on that. It's very different than what we, we saw, especially if you're going to get over that fifty foot height.
Got it. Well, yeah, well, well, yeah, we'll double check with our architect to confirm his dimensions.
Okay. Other than I, great project, guys. This is going to make a big difference in downtown. I mean, I, I can't wait to see what you can do.
Thank you.
Thanks, Jim. Next up, Suzanne, any further comments or questions? You're on mute?
No, I think it's a great project. It's an exciting project. I think it sounds like you guys really have your game together there. So we just want to see how the community will react. And hopefully it'll be positive. It looks like the community will benefit greatly.
That's great, thank you.
Virginia?
I don't have any questions, but I do want to say thank you and it looks great.
Awesome, thank you.
Colin, anything else to add?
Just now that I'm looking at this picture, any traffic concerns or considerations with that number of people going through this kind of little side street here?
Yeah, no, that, that's a good question. So we have a, a traffic engineer engaged who's been looking at the, at the site plan. The building itself doesn't generate that many additional trips. It's maybe thirty to forty trips during the peak hours, which is less than a car a minute, closer to one car every two minutes. So we, we don't think the building itself really adds any traffic issues. That said, we know it's a, you know, it's a challenging area, especially the, the intersection between West Broad Street and Route Two. So we're looking to see if there's some, some easy changes we can make that would help deal with cars making lefts on the Cobble Street or, or coming out of the site. And that's something we're, we're working on refining the, the design of now.
And I'm a little more thinking about actually the crosswalk because I think the crosswalk is a little tricky.
Yeah.
Matt, if, Matt, if I could just jump in.
Sure.
Through the board member's question, you know, absolutely. In fact, the crosswalk is part of the confusion, I think, at that intersection. We had a meeting this morning with Pete Stewart and Captain Olson just to talk a little bit about some concepts. And we're still in the, in, in that concept phase, but, you know, talking about that crosswork, crosswalk and making it safer. It's a very long crosswalk right now. And it's, it's right at the, sort of the, the apex of the curve. So we're taking a look at that and seeing, you know, if there are things that we can do to, to make that a safer situation. Bottom line is, is, you know, in, in terms of the overall traffic that comes past this point, the additional forty trips at the peak hour is really a drop in the bucket. But the real question is
Yeah, no, that makes sense.
Yeah, it's, it's not an issue of congestion. It's just, we want to make, if, if we can, we'd like to create a safer situation than what we found. And if we can make that intersection a little bit safer than it is today and it makes sense, you know, we're going to try to do that. And that's really what we're working on right now. But, you know, as Matt indicated, you know, we're going to have you fully prepared at the P and Z level to talk about traffic and the lack of impact and the mitigation we're going to be doing.
Thank you, that's great.
I'd like to add a little bit of comment about that crosswalk. I probably use that crosswalk as much as anyone. And it is not ideal as it sits right now. Far better place for the crosswalk. And again, it's over state. Um, and it is not ideal as it sits right now. Far better place for the crosswalk. And again, it's over a state road. Um, would be from from the edge of the park, maybe across to where Boggs is, in more of a straight type crosswalk as opposed to a diagonal.
Yeah, totally.
That would be a much better position for that. Much safer for the park. It'd be better even if this project wasn't to happen. That would
Jim, that that's exactly what our traffic engineer uh showed the chief this morning. So again, we're we're working on that with the local police department. We have to confer with DOT as well, but yeah, I agree with you a hundred percent and our traffic engineer does as well.
You guys are on the right track.
You know, the the only other thing
Jim, Jim, be safe, all right?
You know, the only the only other thing I would say, um, I know that Jim had mentioned something about um, the height of the building and the renderings that we've shown. You know, I I don't know if I have the rendering that you looked at, Jim, but um, you know, uh, when I first got involved with this, Dave Hammond showed me a lot of the architectuals um for, you know, potential hotel on the property um, and some other reuses of the property as well. And, you know, I I looked at those as well. Those buildings are are considerably taller than fifty feet. When you look at how many stories are actually built in them. So, you know, we're certainly, we'll certainly go back to our architect uh, and just confirm the renderings are accurate. But, you know, the the drawings I've seen that came out of EDC, which Dave shared with me, um, you know, when you look at it, you're talking about a building that's that's well over sixty feet tall with with peak roofs. So um, just a thought, and it might explain sort of the discrepancy that that you perceive.
Yeah, Bill, I'm familiar with the drawings. Um, yeah, just again, they're they're quite different. I think that it might have to do with just the basic condition. That might be, that might be the difference, but uh,
I think I think that might be part of it too, Jim, but I I appreciate the comment. And it's cert- I will, I will personally confirm that everything's accurate on that.
Yeah, it was just, it was just enough of the difference that I noticed because again, I I was pretty intimately involved with those.
Yeah.
That's why I noticed.
Absolutely, absolutely.
Okay, last up is gonna be Kevin for a final word.
Okay, now I'll just make a comment um that I think what's good about this project is is we're creating a community where a community doesn't exist. So where we're running into problems in Stonington before is where it's already a very popular neighborhood and we're trying to introduce something that's new and big. Here, there's not really a great opportunity for nimbyism because where the residential areas start is is actually a fair way away from where this building is going to be. But this actually brings residents closer to where the commercial areas are. So so then then the the concern I've always had is, you know, if um, you know, are we are we putting too much multi uh or mixed income housing into puck attack? But I think that slide that you've got where when you start to look at those income levels, most people are gonna say, oh, my God, I wish I got paid that much. And then the next thing they're gonna say is, well, I wish I had a kitchen that looked like one of those previous slides which you had uh uh as well. So anything you've got on here's an image of what we think a kitchen and bathroom is going to look like would be helpful because I'd like to challenge a lot of people who won't like it to say, well, show me pictures of your kitchen and bathroom first, then we'll have a discussion about whether they think appropriate um in puck attack. And I think, you know, and and even the rent levels you're looking for for the quality of this building, um, it it it's going to be really, really attractive.
Well, I think that's
By the community.
I think that's really helpful, Kevin. Just one one thought would be here for the larger community meeting a week from this Wednesday, what do you, what other information helpful to include in this presentation? Because you guys know the community, the stakeholders better than we do. And maybe are there things that we're missing or things that we should remove or things that we should add to help tell the story better?
I mean, actually, I think your presentation is great, but I went to a housing meeting given by is one of the guys from the Connecticut Housing Authority, and he showed photos of the kitchens and bathrooms in the developments which had done elsewhere in Connecticut. And honestly, they just looked, they looked great. And because everything's new, it's like, oh, wow, is this, I think everyone thinks, oh, it's a drug dealer who's in some rundown rat infested building. And so any images of internals of uh developments that you've done, I think it it stops the conversation immediately because the picture is so much more powerful than you saying, oh, we're going to do wonderfully new apartments and they're all going to be indistinguishable from each other. So you won't really know who's at a market rate, who's not at a market rate. Um, but I think apart from a couple of pictures like that, um, I agreed that when I saw this picture on the screen from Cogswell Street, I thought there's no way that building can be that low. But if you could, and maybe maybe you've got lower ceiling heights and a few other things than what the previous ones had, but I'd hate to sort of sell something and then when it starts getting built, everything, well, you you basically lied in the presentation as to what the building was going to look like from there. Um, but
Yeah, let us let us put that forth to the architect and engineer and make sure that we're we're being truthful here. I believe we are, but let us triple check like Bill's.
Yeah, because I think if this is correct, then you will, there'll be no debate about this is too big for the neighborhood. It's it's taking away the village atmosphere. It doesn't fit. It's not appropriate, which is what we've heard for other areas where where we've tried to have a, you know, we'll call it a big development, even though it it was, you know, a lot of those other developments were pretty much matching roof heights, you know, across a river uh or across a road. But but when you look at these images, people think, oh, it's just too big. Um, and they complain, which stops the project from moving forward. The ones which did go through when they get built, everyone who was a naysayer think, oh, that building is absolutely tremendous. The size of it is absolutely appropriate for that particular uh property. But yeah, you only get one opportunity here to get all of the support in this before you get the approvals.
Yeah. Kevin, thanks for, thanks for looking at that. I I think the picture, just looking at more closely, the elevation might be like ten feet in the air. That might explain some of the trigonometry in the image, but again, something to triple check.
I I think the recommendation, though, to have some representative uh samples of interior finishes. I know as developers and and land use attorneys, I don't always think about those types of things, but that really does ring true with uh people in a community when they can actually see quality and certainly win win does that type of quality in all of their projects. So, you know, it may be worthwhile to follow Kevin's advice and to add a slide that shows what a representative kitchen or a representative bathroom will look like in the development.
No, definitely. We'll do it. That's right.
Okay, um, so I want to thank uh the WIN uh project team, Adam, Matt and Tim, along with Bill Sweeney uh for joining us tonight. And you're welcome to stay as long as you want. We have two more agenda items. I think you guys have seen the agenda that we're going to cover with regards to this project. So you're absolutely welcome to stay on for those. So I want to thank you guys, the the WIN project team, as well as EDC members for their thoughtful questions and helping WIN to see uh how to better connect with our community. One of the things that's um, you know, very appealing to me about WIN companies as they make an investment in the community and they become partners in the community. And so it's, you know, I hope that that's um been shown tonight and it's certainly by the EDC members have uh offered to partner as well. So thank you for that. Uh, our next opportunity is going to be next week has been has been mentioned on July twenty ninth. Uh, we're going to have hosted community conversations. So we'll talk about that in a bit. But first thing I want to get to is just to affirm the support of the EDC members here um, and to consider a letter of support. Now, there could be multiple letters of support because as the as the WIN, as Matt mentioned, um, it's helpful to have um, letters of support that that to go to the state agencies to show that there's um, community support. So we're seeking those from the business community. We'll seek those from attendees at the July twenty ninth meeting also, but the EDC has an opportunity to provide a letter of support. There would go in a portfolio of of letters that might go to CHFA, but also to our local town um commissions and boards such as the um, the the uh inland, you know, Waterways Commission and the PZC. And we have an opportunity to do that. So what what I would like to uh do is uh, make a motion that uh, that we offer a letter of support for this project with, you know, the typical uh EDC uh orientation. Um, that is to say, you know, we would tend to emphasize more the economic benefits to the community um rather than say certain design elements. But um I would like to make that motion and is there a second?
Now Kevin Bowles will second the motion.
Is there any discussion? Uh, hearing no further discussion, I would like to uh ask all those in favor. And what I'll do is I will um go down the list of EDC member attendees and uh, please state uh, yea or nay or abstain. So I'll go first, Dave Hammond. I'm a I'm a a yes or an A. And Kevin?
Yes.
Jim Lathrop?
As an adjoining property owner, I'll have to abstain.
Suzanne?
I'm a yes.
Virginia?
Hi.
And Colin?
Yes.
Okay, so we show uh four uh five members uh voting in favor of providing a letter of support and showing EDC support for this project and one abstention. Uh, thank you very much. Uh, I'm going to move on to uh, I, you know, in the agenda, I said review and plan for the community conversation. I think the plan is pretty well set. And if you had a chance to review the draft flyer I sent out, um, you'll you'll have seen what the plan is. And so that was done really working with Danielle and Town Hall to uh, to make sure that we could accommodate um, the public in the best way possible, given the current restrictions. Uh, we we really would have liked to have had an in-person public meeting for this or a community conversation. But um, the governor of Connecticut has um said that uh, the max indoors is twenty-five people. So while we might have had been able to kind of bend that by having garage doors open in the in the firehouse, uh, you know, we need to put public safety first. Uh, if fifty plus people showed up or something, you know, what would we do? So we've decided that the best um model is to have um, the public join by a virtual meeting. So you know, there will be a link provided on the website and through other means. Um, we'll also be you know, providing all this information to the press, to the the New London Day and the Westerly Sun so that we, in a press release that I'll issue that uh, we'll want to get as much promotion and um communication as possible to make sure people know that they can join and participate uh, in that virtual session. So that's going to start at, we have it at five thirty, just to make sure if people are working till five, they can join. And we'll go to approximately six thirty, at which time, um, you know, and and WIN company representatives will be uh, providing that overview using a presentation, um, you know, this, the the one you guys saw tonight would be the basically the presentation that would be shown, uh, perhaps modified for some of the ideas that were um, proffered tonight. And so that'll be shown virtually and there, you know, we'll we'll put in, um, we'll we'll provide opportunity for folks to ask questions. The flyer is going to say, please email questions to myself. My email address is provided so that I can, you know, um, organize those and provide those to WIN if we get it, to WIN companies, if we get any questions beforehand, but we'll also have, you know, some sort of o- open mic uh during the community conversation as well as the other features that WebEx provides, which are, you know, you can raise your hand or 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 chat and all that kind of stuff too. So we'll we'll work hard to accommodate um, the public for any way that uh you know, they're most comfortable with, they're best able to participate. Um, again, that just seemed like that was, you know, a discussion with Town Hall and experience they've had with some other, you know, public meetings, the best path to follow um to involve the the public uh to the best of our ability. And but you know, I think one thing that's maybe unique with this community conversation that we can do is we will then hold an open house. So WIN companies will bring you know, storyboards and and, you know, you know, renditions of these slides that can be put on easels. And uh, folks could uh arrive uh to the firehouse at their um, at their convenience to walk, you know, have a show and tell in the firehouse in a socially distant fashion with masks on to be safe. And WIN company representatives could entertain questions and uh, and certainly engage the community there. And you know, uh, you know, we would hope that for folks that were really wanted to find out more, that they would come or if they couldn't attend the virtual, that they would have an opportunity then to come to uh the in-person uh informal walkthrough. Um, so that's what the, that's what the plan is. I, you you've all seen the draft flyer. I wanted to wait to get that sent out until we had this meeting. So um, I'll be intent on doing that tomorrow morning. And what I would like to do right now is ask if there it it's been, you know, and it's been better than reviewed by WIN companies and by uh, uh a number of folks at Town Hall, including Danielle and and Susan Cullen and uh, and Keith Bryan. So we've had a lot of input. Um, so I think we're good to go with that flyer. I want to give a chance for any EDC members if they had any comments, either on the logistics or how we're going to format this uh outreach effort or, you know, any of the content to the flyer. So um, I'll give I give, um, I think what I'll do is is just have a round for any comments. We don't have to have any votes or anything, but uh, any comments on the flyer. So let me start with Kevin.
Yeah, so I was wondering, could we get a um, a pic? This is mainly the post on Facebook. Um, and I've created an event on Facebook for the community meeting, but there's one and uh, Matt, I'm not too sure if you can get to it. It sort of shows the whole, the line, the length of the building next to the railway line. So I think a lot of people won't know the Campbell Elevator Grain Building, but when I think they see that picture and don't know what it is we're talking about. And I'm I'm wondering, not necessarily for your poster, Dave, it wasn't that one. There's another one you've got um. That one there, yes. Um, so I was wondering whether maybe we get a picture, a copy of that rendering uh, to use just on on Facebook for the uh, the event. Because there's too much text, Dave, in your poster for Facebook to probably find that useful. And then uh, we could just do a little community conversation. Uh, once we get the link, we'll attach it to that. Uh, and then it could get posted on the Stonington Community Forum. Um, which I think increases our chances of getting some interest before the community meeting.
Dave, I concur completely with what Kevin just said. I think it, um, more pictures, a little less verbose um, and get some attendance on this. If you're going to have opposition or concern or question, get them out now. Do it early in the process. And I think uh, the renderings are beautiful. They they uh, they they will really, I think, spin this in a very positive light.
So I'm I'm happy to get that rendering over over to you, Dave, for for use.
Okay, very good. Thank you, Matt. Anything else, Kevin? So what we'll do is we'll get that rendering. And I know Kevin is works with our uh, communications professionals who who have done um, an extraordinary job of getting um, not only our Stonington sixteen forty-nine website up, many other ideas for how we could connect with the community through Facebook. Um, and Kevin will will make that happen. So uh, if we get that rendering and and uh, whatever, when we get that rendering and Kevin will get that set up um, for the community um um, to to see and to promote that, then we're we're we'll be in good shape. Does that sound good, Kevin?
That that's all I need, David. And I suppose, and the other question is, when you issue a press release, will you issue a photo or rendering as well? I think that would be helpful.
Was that directed at WIN or at Dave?
Yeah, well, let let me ask, I'll redirect it um to you, Matt, and whichever, so if you're thinking about a press release that goes in about a press release that goes in the paper, and I would include, you know, basically, I would give the flyer to the paper, because that's really all the content that I think is really important for this, and then invite the media to contact me with any questions or to fill in any blanks. But would you want a picture to accompany that? And if so, which one? And I'd be happy to provide that to the media.
Yeah, I definitely think a picture would be, would be useful. I think the one you got in front of you right now would probably be the best one to include. And just for everyone's reference, we do have one-page fact sheets that we handed out at the chamber meeting. We could have this additional meeting that people could take with them, so they'll have a picture of what we're proposing that they can take home. But Dave, in terms of coordination with the paper, I mean, would they be able to reach out to you directly to get the image or reach out to us for an image? And we're happy to provide it.
Yeah, I mean, we can go either way. I can, if you want to provide me with a picture and the fact sheet, I know, I know, I know the media personally, so it's easy for me to connect and, you know, provide the information.
Okay.
But if you'd rather, if you feel better, if you'd like to do it, I'm happy to provide the context, too.
Why don't you send it over to me and I can get our communications team to get in touch.
Okay.
Dave?
Suzanne?
Yeah. You might want to send a couple of pictures. You know, everybody knows that area when they look at the Coxwell Street, you know, some people will be familiar with that. Whereas this other view is, you know, is the second thing you'd want to look at. You know, it's like, oh, it's there, and then that's what it's going to be, you know, that kind of thing?
Yep.
So it doesn't hurt to give a couple of shots. And they, let them do what they want to do with it. People.
Coxwell. I'll refer to wind companies to provide the set of information to promote the project. So Matt, just to recap, the action is for me to provide you with contacts for the media. Okay, I want to go to, is there any other comments on the flyer that would go out to locally and be used for our own promotions? Jim?
No comment.
Suzanne? Are you just going to comment any further?
Looks good.
Virginia, any further comments?
No, I'm all set.
Thank you. Cullen?
No, I would only say, I think we should be prepared, maybe to assemble kind of like an FAQs document after, so we can make sure that we're kind of best representing the questions that the public asked and sort of answering them upfront and transparently just to get ahead of any, any major things that they're focused on.
Yep, great idea. We can have, we can have photographs at the firehouse to report any, any questions or comments. I'm making a lot of noise. I didn't say it's Joe.
I'm here, too.
I'm here, Joe. We're just typing, but it's coming across. Maybe you want to mute? Thank you. Maybe you're looking, Joe. All right, that's better. Okay, that, we're going to close out that, that agenda item and move along so we can finish by 8 o'clock to the circus lot discussion. So again, I'll invite wind company representatives to stay if they'd like to learn a little bit about the circus lot, or they're free to, free to leave. And thank them again for attending. So.
Thanks a lot, Dave. I think I'm going to jump, but you've been a challop. And thanks to all the board tonight. So really, really appreciate all the feedback.
Likewise. Thank you, everyone. Pleasure seeing everyone and look forward to next week.
Sure. Thank you, everyone. See you next week.
Take care.
Thank you, guys.
Thank you.
All right. So for the circus lot, EDC is, has been pursuing the idea of acquire, or reacquiring that property. And we'd acquire from Westerly Water Company, and Westerly Town. And the water company was, had built a wellhead on there that was never used. So the EDC has funded a Phase One environmental assessment, which was really thorough. And I think we all learned a lot about environmental assessments. And our goal was to provide informed advice to the town of Stonington for potentially purchasing the lot without stepping into any issues with regards to environmental contamination. So that's just a kind of a basic due diligence step that we thought was propitious to take. So in reviewing that, we felt there, the Phase One report, we felt there were two kind of like follow-up things that we would like to pursue. And one was the groundwater test via the test wells already on the site. And the other was to analyze some core soil samples, especially in the vicinity of the pump house, where there was some fill brought in from, from, from Westerly in order to elevate the pump house. So Danielle and I met with some Westerly officials. And, you know, it looks like, you know, they don't have any problem with us exercising the reversion clause to reacquire the property for, I think it's $35,000, which is a bargain for 5.8 acres. You know, the EDC vision has been, is one of the pieces of the puzzle for downtown Park attack revitalization to reacquire this lot. With hopefully, you know, a good portion of it being, well, the whole thing being cleaned up and secured, but also a good portion of it could revert to recreational use. And this would be a piece of the puzzle that would help to build, further build amenities for downtown residents, including, you know, water access and amenities such as a kayak launch. So in order for us to make a good faith and well-informed proposal to, to the town for reacquiring it and spending the money, which would still have to be, you know, found in the budget, we wanted to take these two, two other steps. So I guess the, we'll have discussion, but I'll make a motion that the EDC fund these follow-ups, you know, studies for testing groundwater and for the, taking core samples for the, especially around the, for the fill around the pump house. And the estimate is, you know, I think it's going to be $2,000 or $3,000 to do that. And so I would like to make a motion that the EDC fund that from their budget so that we can then move on to the next step, which would be to recommend to the town to exercise the reversion clause. So that, that's a motion. Do I have a second?
Dave, I'll second that motion, Suzanne.
And now, is there any discussion with regards to that? And so I will.
Dave, real quick. So are we saying that we'll fund up to a, for the vote, are we funding up to a certain level? Let's say up to, not to exceed $5,000 for the very specific task of water samples of some of the existing site wells and core sampling of the raised area near where the pump house is where fill is brought in. So are we, are we being very specific about that?
Yeah, we'd be very specific. Yeah, thanks, Jim. And we'd be very specific. And, you know, 5,000 would be a big chunk. So I mean, I would say, let's, let's settle on 3,000 as a max, thinking that it's in the range of 2,000 to 3,000. And if it was more than 3,000, then we would come back to the EDC.
Okay.
For another vote. So the motion would be, you know, pretty much just articulated, two tests, two follow-ups, and then a max of 3,000. Any, so, so now we're going to have some, any other discussion before we, before we vote on it. So I'll go to Kevin first. Kevin, are you on, are you nearby?
I went the opposite way. So I just wanted to explain what I'm thinking. So I'm assuming that at the moment, the town of Westerly is paying taxes to the town of Stonington for this property.
I don't honestly know that. We'd have to, we'd have to go into the grand list and look that up.
Yeah, in fact, I was just going to look for it. But I'm assuming that, you know, they own it. It's, maybe it's not very much, but, but I wouldn't, I think for the time being, we've got someone else paying us taxes on a piece of property that we don't have any plan for. However, when I think about the fact that we could buy five acres of land in Stonington for $35,000, then I personally, if it was my money, I would do it, even with the environmental risks. And even with the fact that you may not be able to monetize the property exactly as it is at the moment because of the environmental risks. But the fact that we don't have the plan makes me feel a little bit, why do it if we've got someone paying us, paying us taxes? If we don't have a plan, what, what's going to happen? However, I think once the town buys the property, then the Dole Oil Lot property actually becomes a lot more valuable to a potential developer. So possible that by us making this recommendation to buy, let's say we do the environmental work, we find it's not terrible, we get by it, we're potentially unblocking another piece of property that I can't imagine anything's going to happen with it unless, you know, some other miracle occurs. So on, on balance, I think this is the right direction to go to. But I've just got a couple of reservations about, about when we should buy it if we don't have a plan and if, and if someone else is paying, even if it's only a couple of thousand bucks a year, is paying the town some money for it.
So Kevin, this is Cullen. I would, I would sort of agree. Like, I think it makes sense to, it feels like right now, we can't really create a plan without getting this information. And so it feels like we need to do this to get the right information to make a plan. But I do think we should be really thoughtful about timing.
Yeah, I agree. But also, yeah, I think for $3,000, to get more clarity on what's going on, is a relatively modest amount of taxpayers' money to spend to potentially have another piece of property in Park Attack that if it was to be redeveloped, or if it was to be used as riverfront access, ended and now enabled the property in front of it on Liberty Street to be redeveloped, then I think that we've got it, we potentially have a couple of different things going on in Park Attack, which actually makes Park Attack, you know, an incredibly attractive neighborhood. And that's what we're trying to achieve.
I, I'll, let me just wade into the, my opinion, without getting this modest amount of testing done, I can't see how Stonington can buy this. I just can't, because the risk would be too large. So for a relatively modest amount of money, we can get kind of a huge chunk of risk. And to be honest with you, the final, I don't necessarily think, it's just my opinion, I don't necessarily think we have to have a final use for this site determined or a plan for it. I think that there'll be competing interests for this site. Some may be commercial, some may be public use. My sense is that, especially the Dole Oil Site and the two other sites between the Dole Oil Site and the Park Attack Fire Department being for sale right now. And I guess, I guess those other two sites being actively marketed is not like the Dole Oil Site. My sense is that there's a potential, this site could have multiple uses. The topogary of the site is not, you know, there's a part down by the river, there's a part much closer to the road, there's, there's a part by the railroad tracks. So there's a potential, some of it might be used for parking, some of it might be used for public use, some might be sold developer to flesh out a site for a larger business. You know, you don't know, that might not, will probably not be made by EDC in the end. But what we can do is give the people the full, that decision options. And I think by doing this, we give the most options to the town of Stonington in how to use this property.
Totally agree, Jim.
Yeah, I agree. Get the tests done and go from there.
Okay, so where, we have a second for this motion, or do we get on to the discussion first?
We have the second.
So we're back to all in favor.
Suzanne already seconded, and I appreciate all the, all the input. So it sounded like that everybody was basically in accordance that it was money elsewhere. And to me, I like, I would have, so I'm thinking a couple steps down the road. So we need to go ask for budget money to, and as you guys know, we put in a CPA, which was supported by the town, but it didn't get funded. And it's funded for a dollar right now. And that is because, you know, of the COVID impacts, and they had to kind of, you know, make some budget cutbacks. So the concept is supported by the town. But if you're thinking down the road and you go to the Board of Finance, and we need to go, if there's a, a public hearing that has to happen to purchase this, we need to be able to say with, you know, in good faith that we have done some due diligence. And so that's why I really feel this additional 3,000 is good use of taxpayer money.
Totally, totally agree, Dave. Any, any sense of, of timing of it? Because I do think, based on the fact that there are two other lots that are adjoining and would potentially be of interest, depending on whatever we could do with the site, I feel like there is some sense of urgency on timing.
Totally agree. And, you know, I'm, I'm a guy from corporate, so the pace of the town can be, the pace of municipal governance, it can be frustrating for some like myself. So I'd like, I mean, personally, I like to move forward as quickly as possible. I think, you know, so we're going to vote on spending $3,000. I would like to get, you know, contact, if we want to go with, with Sally Kropf again to finish this up, you know, contact her tomorrow and get it lined up and let's get going on it. The hardest part is going to get the funding from the town. But as I mentioned, we have support. And we may need to wait a little while for some dust to settle because there's still so much, so many moving parts with, with town funding. But, you know, I know we have support in the select, selectman's office for this. And, and, you know, as part of the overall vision for downtown Park Attack. So, you know, I'll be work, you know, the EDC will be working hard to find the path forward on the fastest timeline we can, we can arrange. But it will entail, we just started the new fiscal year on July 1. It'll entail, and so, you know, we're not going to know if there's going to be monies available that could be shifted, maybe for a while. But it's going to be working with the Board of Finance to, to find out if there's a line item that we can, that's going to have some surplus that we could maybe tap into. That could take a little, Cullen, that would take the most time, I think. That could take a little, Colin, that would take the most time, I think.
Dave, as far as testing goes, three to four weeks after receipt of purchase order, you'll get test results on this.
Yeah.
So it's like three to four weeks, it's a day on-site for water samples, and then just testing lead time, that's all it is, and the testing for this is all done in state.
Any other discussion? All right, I'm going to go down the, down the list for a vote. Well, I will start with myself, and I'm a, yes. Kevin? Suzanne?
Yes.
Virginia?
Yes.
And Colin?
Emphatically, yes. I don't know if that's better than enthusiastically, but I felt like I needed something.
Oh, yeah, providing emphasis is always good, so, all right, very good. So the record will show that we had a unanimous six in favor, none opposed, no abstentions, and thank you very much. We will get started on that. Jim, I might work with you then to, to contact Kropf and, and get that work done.
Not a problem, I can work with Sally on this.
Yeah. Right, so we, we're not actually, we can't, as a special meeting, we can't add any other business, so we actually can't add any agenda items. So that brings us to item number six, was it, which is adjournment. So I would like to suggest we adjourn at 7:58.
Kevin Ballard will second that motion.
Okay, and thank you, everyone, for joining, and we will, I'll get minutes out, and we'll, we'll keep moving forward.
Good meeting, Dave, thank you very much. Thanks, everybody, bye-bye.
Thanks, Dave. Good to see everybody.